It's eight fifty-two. We've just come out of executive session and no action was taken. Want to thank our, our guest, Mr. Dyer. And Rory and everybody who went in. Thank you so much. And we're officially out. So we're going to go back to agenda item number nine. Discussion and take possible action regarding fire department abatement policy. I know that the ordinance committee met and the ordinance was updated. Policy was updated. It's in our packet for the new sixty-five plus abatement. So I know that Bob and Rob had some, had some, may have had some comments here. So if you guys want to start the conversation, we can. But what we're going to try to do is we're going to need to approve. This new policy, if it's sufficient to everybody. So I'll let Robert Bob kick us off.
Mr. Bruno, if I may, it's Brian Leclerc. Just to remind the selectmen under your ordinance six point three eight. Tax abatement eligibility is based on a point system that is approved by the Board of Fire Commissioners and the Board of Trustees of the Seymour Ambulance Association. And then ratified by the Board of Selectmen. So that's why you have it tonight for the ratification by this board.
Thank you for clarifying, Brian, for us and for people may be watching. Appreciate that. Pat?
Okay, I got a couple of things and. Tom Council just delayed to one. I'm looking at the documentation which was given to us in our packets. I don't see anything about EMS in here. Okay, it's point number one. Number two, there's not even a date on this. I mean, I don't know who puts this together, but certainly I would think that you would want to put a date on it. Number three. Okay, if you look at the over sixty-five requirements, it says must have twenty years of service. It's sixty-five and twenty-five, isn't it?
Yeah, so for, for two of those items. This was the Board of Fire Commissioners put this together and forwarded it to this board for approval. It is twenty-five years. You're correct. Tom Amy actually had asked me to make that change and I forgot to do so. So I apologize. And then the other item, because this is the fire department's policy, there is no reference to EMS.
Okay, so that, that answers that question. When, when does the sixty-five, twenty-five, okay? Go into effect. There's no effective date in this policy. Okay, and. Mr. Amy, who was the chairman, former chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners, okay? Sent out a memo to each company captain, being the captain of Great Hill and the captain of citizens. Okay, outlining the details of the program. In that it said it will start next year. Well, when is next year? We need to put a date to that. Is next year, next January? Is next year, next July? It's not in this document. The third thing I'd like to add is, is that I think. And I would hope that there would be language in here. That the Board of Fire Commissioners, okay, in conjunction with the awards committee would review this policy. On some kind of a timely basis. By doing so, you establish, okay? A baseline going forward, okay? This part, the existing. Abatement program, okay, was indoctrinated in two thousand and one. Two thousand and one. That's nineteen years ago. Nineteen plus years ago. No revisions have been made. So those are the things that I'm concerned with. And I would hope that, number one, we get the. Number of years of service straightened out and that we would consider some kind of language to. You know, have the effective date put in there and also some kind of review process language. So those are my concerns.
Hey, thank you, Pat. Rory, do you think we need to make Pat's suggestions to the document and bring it back to the board or? Maybe we'll listen to the rest of the discussion first?
Yeah, I'll let the other selectman go first and then maybe if I can answer any questions, I will.
Okay. Uh, Bob and then Rob.
Yeah, so yeah, I'm going to reinforce where Pat was headed with the documentation of the start date and things like that. I think that, that was, it has to be within the body of the document. And I think I'm saying the same thing, same thing as Pat, but I want to make sure the process by which they. Whether it's a timeline process by which they do it on a repeat basis, on an annual basis and so that it's more repeatable. I think it has to be added to this document in some way. So that it's not just this document that sits there. It's also including the process by which they'll have all the information back to the town so that all this can occur. I think that's important. So if they can add the process as well, whether it be it's going to be done by a certain month of the year or I don't know what. Now again, I'm just thinking out loud, they need to think through what that process is going to be and make it repeatable.
No, the only thing I was trying to point out is that. I don't know what that interval is. I can't say what the right interval is, whether it be review it in three years, review it every three years, review it every two years. So be it. If the Board of Fire Commissioners are in charges and I, and I speak as a former fire commissioner, I served on a Board of Fire Commissioners twice. You know, let them set the interval, but I think by doing so, okay, again, you, you have a baseline to work from now. Okay?
I'm not trying to set the interval. I'm just saying it needs to be.
I'm not trying to set it either. What if, whatever is decided is decided. I'm just saying you need to have, you need to have a starting point. This thing hasn't been looked at in nineteen plus years. Nothing has changed. Nothing has changed. So I think it's important to put it in there.
Fair point. Rob?
Yeah, I agree with both of you. In the ordinance committee, most of the emphasis was looking at making sure that the people who are going to benefit from this. So you know, we're looking at all those things. So Pat brought up great points, start date, let's say a some review process. We can ask them, how often do you guys want to review it, make a suggestion through? So for all these reasons, I think it's smart to profit that now that everybody's here, looked at it, Pat has suggestions. Kick it back to ordinance, review it one more time, make those changes and then present it hopefully at the next meeting. For ratification, however that process, I think it's, we look at it, we confer with the fire department and go back and forth. But yeah, for what Pat said, I'm going to vote no on it now.
Should we redline markup this document to ask the questions so that they, we're not just sending it back with just these comments? Should we, should we really document it on this, you know, this memo or this, um? This document?
I'm taking notes right now. Bob, are you?
Yeah, can I just make a clarification? So the, the ordinance committee approved the ordinance. It was approved by the selectmen. The ordinance is complete. The ordinance is, is done. So what this is, the ordinance requires that this board approve the policy as, as approved by the fire commission. And so the step would be to kick it back to the fire commission for any edits that you guys would like to see. And then come back to the full board of selecting.
Well, that's my understanding and that's why I wanted to pause when Pat first started making comments. As a former commissioner, I respect, you know, two times he's been on a commission. I respect his comments. I want to make sure this is nice and tight. I don't want there to be an issue later. And then have it coming it back at us. So you know, you guys know I like to do things right the first time whenever possible. Let's do it. That's my opinion, but I just want to hear what everybody else has to say because I think that's the route to go here.
So to, to make sure I have a comprehensive list here, you guys would like to see. I mean, we, we can add, you know, in a effective date. So I'm trying to think about this in terms of versions. I agree, Pat, to your, to your comment that was made about job descriptions as well. Documents should be marked when they're most recently updated. So we know when the changes were made. So we can do that, I think, without kicking it back to the fire commission. I think that is a change that we can make to the document. In. To that point, you know, if this hasn't been touched in twenty years and this is the first change. You know, we, we can add an effective date to that section. If you guys are okay with the content of the new section, which, which is what's highlighted and red, I, I feel comfortable making some notes as to when certain sections are affected and, and when the plan was last edited. But if there's content changes you'd like to see, then I can absolutely get those to. Well, the vice chair, the Tom was the chair and he was just replaced or will be replaced tonight. So. Are there any content changes you guys would like to see?
Beyond the fact of making sure we have something in it that has the process of where it will be revisited and I think that's an important add.
Oh, absolutely. I can, I think that's, that's worth sending it back to them. Like, would, would you like to see a mandatory? Periodic update or something like that?
I think there has to at least be a review. Is that what you're getting at, Bob? Like you, you can't just let this sit on the shelf and collect dust, which has been commented upon. It has to be a living document. In order to make it a living document, you have to actually revisit it once in a while and make sure it's not going sideways and you, your practice is different than the policy in, in, in there or whatever. You've got to revisit and make sure it's current. I mean, two to three years is usually two or three, whatever it may be. We might want to let them do that, but put it in there that we'd like you to have a review date. We'd like to have a, a start date to what Pat was alluding to, a date that, you know, a firm date.
And that's why rev control and all that starts to be very important to the document. So I think adding the rev control and adding the repeatability of when it should be revisited, I think that just sums it up. Pretty quick.
Part of this, part of this document includes an awards committee. And. My whole premise for bringing you this up is, is that. The awards committee is going to be working in conjunction with the Board of Fire Commissioners. That's the way I'm reading this and. How one goes about getting the, a full abatement is based on a point system. I'm going to use that as an example. Okay. Two years from now. The awards committee and the fire commissioners might want to say, look, we think it's time and we need to look at the point system. Okay, revise it, revise it up, revise it down, revise it. And so to me, again, it's, it's important that. That some kind of a review date be put in here. If, if we can get a review date put in here and we can make the correction on the over sixty-five. Twenty-five, okay, and with the effective date of that change is going to be when it goes into effect. I don't have any problems with other than that.
Does anybody else have any other comments that we haven't discussed? Okay, well, it sounds like we've come up with some suggestions and or questions for them. Do, do you have all your notes? Do you have everything captured? Because now's the time to do it. So we're not following up with people or save your work later and might as well do it now.
Yeah, so I'll just reiterate and you guys will tell me if I missed anything. You'd like to see an effective date. An edited slash approval date added to the document and a mandatory review process for reapproval.
Sounds good to me. Any else? You all good guys? Thumbs up?
All right, I will over to the vice chair.
Thanks, Rohr.
Thank you.
Good job on that, people. All right, we're going to go to agenda item number ten. Discussion and take possible action regarding tax incentive policy. I know Rory has a, something he wants to review with us, right Rohr? Do you need a little, little time? Because we're just transitioning to the next thing?
I just have to pull up, it was in the. The documents I sent out today. So let me just bring it up.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so. You guys. When we were doing one of the recent tax incentive policy applications. You guys had voted to form a committee to review the current tax incentive plan. You had some concerns about it being a little vague in terms of the qualifications and everything. So what I did was go back. I went to the assessor. I reviewed the records that I had from when I was doing. The economic development the last time. I did not have the records from when Fred Messori was economic development director. But the applications that took place during his time in Seymour are included here. And so what this represents is. You'll see, starting here in two thousand and fourteen. The current tax abatement plan was approved in two thousand and twelve. And so these follow the format that's laid out in the tax incentive plan. These are the only applications that I could find and the only ones that the assessor had on his records, which are pretty thorough. And so what these represent is they're, they're by the investment that's made in the property, this column here. You choose an abatement percentage and a duration. Some of those are fixed by the. You know, by the criteria that are set in the policy. I did not have just for these first two. They're not referenced in the agreement and I could not, I didn't have the. The applications that were submitted originally, Fred Messori would have had those. So I, those represent everything passed under the current tax incentive plan. From nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and six. In your packet tonight that was sent out, the original packet, there is some documentation on what was called the SMART Plan. Which was the previous, the town's tax incentive. And so I just wanted for you guys to have both of those as well as these. That I don't have any documentation. There may have been some for these SMART Plan applications. All the assessor had on his records. Were. You know, that they were completed because they're so old at this point. And, and the information that's provided here basically. So I hope that that's a good starting point for you. If I can get you more information. You know, I'm happy to see what I can find for you because we've had several economic development directors in and out over the years. This is all I could find.
Rory, this is great that you got this information. The, the one thing you can tell right away is no one knows about the plan. Especially with the gap in years and, you know, it, you know, because even the most recent stuff, it was probably, we probably made it aware of that plan.
I think it was two thousand and eleven, Bob, when I was on that. Committee.
Yeah, no, but it was back. Yeah, but even that plan looks, when you go back, it was ninety-nine to two thousand.
Yeah, oh yeah, we were revising and taking a peek at it. Yeah, exactly. We weren't the originators.
We have a big gap and, you know, with the amount of people that have taken advantage of it, no one knows about the plan. You know?
Got to promote it a little better. Sounds like we have a promotion.
Because I, I love, I mean, the data is perfect. I mean, that's what we want to see.
Hey, real quick, not that I would expect anyone to knock it out of their head, but for business systems and truly to have gotten a hundred percent for seven years, that's part of how the current structure is based on a certain investment?
Correct. If I'm not mistaken, that tier starts at three million dollars of investment. Well, so that's why you can see they're the only two over that add up a percent. And you can see the, the investment levels, how they're, you know, much higher than some of the other applications.
Which falls in line with what the plan prescribes.
Correct.
The percentage.
Yep.
Because of their dollar investment.
So I think we were mentioning it, mentioning it the last couple of meetings ago. That it might be time to form a committee to take a peek. And so that's what we've, we're venturing forward with, right Rohr?
Correct. If I'm not mistaken, let me just check my notes real quick. I believe you guys created a subcommittee. We did. Then I have Rob, Bob, Chris and Trish.
Yep. Sounds right.
Yep. So if this is sufficient background for you guys to get started, I'm happy to work with you to get something set up. A time to start reviewing this.
Yeah, absolutely. Definitely. So the, what are you going to do? Should I add an email?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll work with you guys to find your availability.
That's what I was going to suggest Rory, reach out and set it up. So. Good job, Rohr.
Yes, perfect.
So. Do we, Brian, do we need to take a motion for Rory to do that, to set up the subcommittee meeting or?
No, he could, I think he could just do that.
That's what I think too. Okay.
But thank you for that information, Rory. Very valuable. A lot of good information there and some good comments about the time gap and something that really need to. Look and try to promote.
Yeah, what I'll mention is, as Anne Marie alluded to, the new website launched on Friday. And it is a bit of a mess. So please bear with me. I'm working to get it up and running. But one of the things that I've been talking about with the Economic Development Commission is definitely working on the business tab, which is in need of updating. We had, we had discontinued their own individual website. And so we would be working to all that content into the towns.
Sounds good. Thank you, Rohr, for putting that together. Good job. So I think we can, we can move on to our next agenda item, everybody. Number twelve, appointments. As you can see, we have some appointments. Go through. So I believe we're starting to do these individually again. We're not just proving the whole slate, correct? Okay. Brian, help me out if I don't hit this properly, but I believe I have, I have this down, but we'll see. So first appointment is Patrick Keo, Board of Fire Commissioners. It's an appointment, three-year term, expiration date twelve thirty-one twenty-three.
Did that be twenty-four L if it's three years?
Rohr is three years accurate. Bob has a question regarding.
Yes, it is accurate. There, the charter is very specific. Pat's laughing because we've been through this. The charter is very specific. There are fixed terms for certain members of the commission who represent the individual houses. And some are appointed by this board, some are chosen by the firehouses. Very complicated.
As long as it's good and the dates are right, I'm good.
Absolutely. I, I thought that would get asked.
All right, well, I, I put all the information out there. Do I have a, a motion?
Motion.
Second by Pat, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? Motion passes five zero zero. All right, next appointment, Trish Danka, event committee. It's an appointment, two years. Three sixteen twenty-three expiration date, can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Chris, Bob Finley, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? All right, chair votes in favor, motion passes five zero zero. Next appointment, Bob Bohunyak, Sustainability Committee. It's a reappointment for two years. Expiration date three sixteen twenty-three, can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Bob Finley, second by Chris. All in favor? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero zero. All right, appointments, Kathy Rich, Commission on Aging. It's a reappointment for two years, expiration date three sixteen twenty-three, can I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Pat? Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
And even though she's my aunt, I'm voting for her because I think she's great on that committee. Chair votes aye too, five zero zero. Appointments, Jen Saxa, Noghtuck Valley Health District. Reappointment for two years, expiration date three sixteen twenty-three, can I have a motion, please? Bob Finley, second by Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Motion passes five zero zero. All right, thanks, guys. Do we have any tax refunds or abatements? Yes, we do. Do we? Yes, looks like we do, right? Okay. Take a look, see if you have any conflicts. Everybody good? Have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
I'll move. Pat, second, Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero zero. Agenda item number thirteen, fourteen, excuse me, transfers. I don't believe we have any transfers, correct? I didn't see any. Okay, thanks, Rohr. Fifteen correspondence. We have a couple of pieces of correspondence, I believe. We have one from the Umbrella Center for Domestic Violence Services dated February eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Thanking town of Seymour support. Award of four thousand dollars, as you can see. And this was. Sent by Stubblefield, who's the Director of Domestic Violence Services. We also have a letter. Company to their selectwoman Dragonec dated March twelve, two thousand and twenty-one. Talking about their nominations and elections and it looks like the election process selected Pat Keo, which we just approved. Points, position for three years, expiring December twenty twenty-three. And that's from Dan Cooper, the President of Great Hill Hoes. Our two pieces of correspondence, to my knowledge, Rohr, am I missing anything?
Nope, I believe that's it.
Great. Thank you. Next on the agenda, number sixteen, public comment. Is there any public comment, Rohr?
I've received none.
Okay, we received no public comment. There is no public comment at the end of our meeting. Number seventeen, selectmen's public comments. And as we do it, we do it the way of the Brady Bunch. First up in the upper left corner is Mr. Patrick Lombardi.
Just a couple of comments. You know, things are starting to loosen up a little bit with the COVID restrictions. Ever I know today that. Our numbers are up by two percent over what they were. Yesterday or the day before, so. It's not time to become complacent. We still need to safeguard ourselves, our families. Wear a mask, wash your hands and happy Saint Patrick's Day.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next up on my screen, upper right-hand corner is Mr. Rob Van Egan.
I'm going to echo Pat's sentiment, while things are getting better, to make sure we don't stall that out. Get everybody keep doing what you're doing. An interesting note, my wife, who always gets sick, said, she kind of hopes that we keep doing masks for the foreseeable future, just because she realizes this was going to be the first winter ever that she didn't get some horrible sinus infection, so. You know, it's be able to go get a margarita anywhere when it's cold. But maybe just keep the hygiene going and the safety, because then we'll feel a little better just health-wise, but everybody just stay strong till we can get through this, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up, Bob Finley.
No, just, you know, it's opening up to get scheduled for your vaccines, so, you know, when you can get scheduled, there's more and more opportunities now. So as the age is coming closer and closer to mine, we can start scheduling, which is great, and happy St. Patrick's Day.
And just a note, our age group, Bob, got moved up from, I believe, Monday to this Friday, the 19th.
That's what I, I heard, I wasn't sure when it was, but I, yeah.
So double check, but I'm pretty sure it's the 19th, so I'm going to be signing up soon too. Chris?
I think I've spoken enough tonight, be safe and stay strong in regards to COVID. We're not out yet, but the lights at the end of the tunnel.
And I would just like to have a couple of quick comments, I'd like to thank our Seymour High School Student Council for their time tonight. I, I'm sincere in volunteering my time to help pick up litter. You know, it's a big thing, I'm always picking up garbage wherever I go, I can't stand it. It just makes our town look better and it makes a comment to others who come through our town, when they, they see it's clean, it really does leave an impression with people, it does matter. And it's good for the environment, not only does it, for aesthetics, it's just better for our, our environment. Also, I'd like to, to echo what people have said, get vaccinated, check the dates. I guess Connecticut has a, has received, has a surplus, so people should be able to go out there and get them without much of an issue. And other than that, I have nothing else to say. Attorney Leclerc, do you have any comments tonight?
I do not, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Rory, any last words? Oh, Rory's on the phone.
Nope, we're all set.
Okay, all right, well, I just want to thank everybody tonight for helping me facilitate this meeting and being the great colleagues you all are on this board. I greatly appreciate it. I think it went through without any hiccups at all, and that's reflection on, on our team. So thank you so much tonight, and that's it, have a great evening.
Thank you for serving in Anne Marie's absence to attend an emergency. Nice job, Al.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.